Good evening. This meeting was called for Monday, May 20th, 2024 at 7:30 PM at Borough Hall located provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10-4-8B. Public may choose to attend this meeting electronically via Google Meet. This meeting was advertised on the sponsored website and in the home news tribute.
Councilman Kramer?
Here.
Councilman Leto?
Here.
Councilwoman Schwartz?
Here.
Councilman Zaborni?
Here.
Council President Legakis?
Here.
Mayor Palmer?
So the engineer, uh, engineer report, uh, we will skip over tonight. They are not, uh, able to attend, but there is a report. Okay, we'll move on to the 2024 municipal budget presentation. May you promise?
Thank you, Councilman. Um, if my clipper works, I'm going to stay up here so that I can speak into the microphone. So I don't want you to be angry about that.
Thank you.
Can you hear me? You will, yes, okay. Um, and so, uh, I am excited to present this 2024 board budget. Um, she's got to be a bit of a challenge. Is that batteries in? I apologize. Please can all hear me, I'll turn the microphone this way. Does that work? So I think that sound might be a little better.
Absolutely.
Okay. Uh, still, I don't have a mouse. Okay. Um, so as always, this is a collective, you know, the administration, the administration, uh, puts together proposals our annual budget to the council, um, prior to our introduction, uh, that happened last month. Good way. Um, special thanks to our business administrator, um, Brandon, uh, for working so hard to ensure that we are always watching out for our taxpayers, watching out for our bottom line, watching out for what's most important. Um, in a time when our, you know, inflation has gone absolutely out of control. We have residents, we have, um, businesses who are struggling within the borough. Um, you know, we all really have a difficult time. I mean, anybody of us can go to the grocery store and see how, you know, crazy it is to purchase groceries. So our job as an administrator, and we have done this for the past three years, um, is keeping our municipal tax rate flat. Actually, it's just a tad bit lower than municipal this year. So we have a zero impact, zero increase on our municipal tax budget issue. Um, this is now again, the third year in a row that the Palmer admin and 2023 was 1.4, um, which is more than what we ended with in 2022. In 2024, we utilized about $500,000 in that surplus. Um, we have almost a million dollars in our surplus account going into this budget year. Again, we keep including in our budget the funds for our capital projects, but I am happy to also say that you're utilizing and I said earlier, this is a slight decrease in our municipal tax this year. While we still absorb the growing costs of municipal services, um, we have reduced shared services, as we all know. And we have increased healthcare costs, as everyone knows, um, not only um, that's going to be an increase of up to $50 million of the next thirty years. I'm not sure, um, how much all of you may, may not have known about the negotiations that went on with that redevelopment. And I know that there's a lot of questions, is there somebody going in there? The reality is they, as a mayor, started to pay us on that pilot program, which is almost a million dollars to the borough. That's an 1100% increase in taxable revenue, tax revenue to this borough. That helps us to offset and keep these levels flat as our rates are rising for healthcare, as our standard and cost of living is increasing. We've also negotiated a rental agreement with AT&amp;T Horizon and T-Mobile. When 85 Main Street went out of, um, business, when it was Schweitzer, they housed those three cell companies. Well, those three cell companies, and they were paying Schweitzer rent for that, for those cell towers there. They are now paying the borough a software grant for those cell at $295,000 a year. My job as the, as the mayor of this town and what I was elected to do was to look for additional funding options for this borough, to look at the financials, to take a very hard and so far, this Palmer administration has technically passed this flat for three years. We've invested for one and a half million dollars in the Daniel Ward water plant. And continuing to do well with those over there. We have our continued events that we party, we will have our, our Spark in the Park event with this year. Our, these are the events that were last year. So I always like to show this slide. I know a lot of people aren't fans of pie charts, but we get a lot of questions from residents asking us, you know, why did my taxes go up here? You stood in the room and you said to everybody, you had a flat municipal tax. We do. We purposely do that so that we could keep it down for the raising of the taxes that come elsewhere, from the county, from the school. Um, those taxes affect, affect all percent of that bill that you get. The school taxes are about 57% of that bill. And the municipal taxes, which is Borough Council and the administration controls this about 28% of that tax. So in our variances in our revenues. So surplus was there around, we're not using anything different than we did last year. We have a little bit of increase in our, our local revenues, 228,000. Our state a little bit went up, so we did a decrease in our construction code fees. We did not use developers contribution. And our police outside services administration fees went up a little bit and our pilot, oh, I'm sorry. And our pilot payment program came in at 730,000 for three quarters of this year, which doesn't include the land tax that we also get on that. So as I said, it's about a million dollars a year, um, of that paid pilot payment. And just to let you know that that doesn't go away, that's 30 years, and the financial agreement is 2% over that number every year for the next 30 years. So some of our variances from appropriations, our total salaries inside and outside the cap went up about 415,000. Police salaries went up about 206,000. Um, EMS salaries were about 140. We had some super charges and statutory expenditures that came down, almost 300,000. Our debt service did increase, um, 100,000, that's became down that day. We had a special emergency last year that was almost about $60,000, um, for room, um, repairs. And our reserve fund, the rest of taxes pointed out. Um, there is a library increase. So in our municipal, in our municipal, we're responsible for the library as well. So you do have on your tax bill, it's a separate tax on that library. So the library tax did increase, which is why our municipal tax rate went down just a bit, so that we could offset this cost. Um, so their tax level changed with, uh, 4,000 and change. There are, their increase, um, was $26,988 for library tax. So our, here over here, I'm not going to go through all of it, but as you can see, um, we do have some increases here, our local municipal, um, increases, our surplus is flat. We got a little more in New Jersey State A, um, a little bit on shared service, our UCC fees went down, library tax went up, other special items in our budget went down, um, and total revenues, um, collectively were down. Our general appropriations and reserve fund taxes, so our total appropriations, we actually came down in the budget this year. So this is a huge credit to each one of our department and division heads working directly with the administration and with Brandon and I to ensure that we always are providing the best services for our, for our residents. Nothing was being cut. They all did, haven't got almost, almost everything that he asked for. Um, can't always give the moon in the stars, but they have, and so our municipal budget has gone down. Um, this is a little bit of a hard, I'm sorry, because I charged for me a little bit, but this, this slide, and I think we have copies, this, this actually will break down exactly what our residential assessed value, um, collectively in the borough is 655, uh, 283,300 million, yes. So the residential units we have are all over 2,500. The assessed value, the average assessed value, and this is interesting, um, given that we know that the housing market has skyrocketed, but we have kept our residential assessed value at 258,000. Um, so our tax rate is 1.019. So the average residential tax on that assessed property at 258,000 is $2,635.65. That's your municipal piece of it. So we actually have an, um, an annual decrease of $2.07. So our total estimated tax on, on property assessed for that amount that we spoke of, your total bill likely is somewhere around $9,300. Um, your school tax, um, where their tax rate is 2,0034. Your residential county tax, which is, um, .52. Our municipal tax, which is 1.019. Uh, the library tax, which is .049. So that is approximately $9,300 a year. So this is just our general appropriations when we, when we take a look at the budget. So our general operations is typically about 83% of our budget. We have statutory expenditures, about 8%, our capital improvements are less than, um, about 1% of that. Our, so about 6%. We do need to reserve for our collectible taxes, um, that to someone for some reason for not, I speak to them, you know, or reserve. Uh, but we have been trending, I want to say somewhere 90, 98% of taxes are being collected in borough. Um, so our total appropriation in our budget is 13,593,900. About eight to be completed, I believe some of the work grows. So Danish Drive, Navywood, River Street, Navywood, Mary Way, West End, Town, Lakeview, Walker. We have our office on leasing senior bus, we put that in our, in our capital plan last year, they're still working out fine. opposed to having to go to a capital plan or, or, um, appropriate funds for that settlement. So anybody?
Thank you, Mayor. Does anybody have any questions? You want to? Want to? Yeah, okay.
A motion, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
A motion open to the public, uh, budget questions only.
Second.
Paul Weber?
Uh, at this time, if anybody has any questions regarding the budget, please come forward.
Chuck Haber, 65, Herman Drive. Um, I noticed in the area of revenue, um, there are two revenue areas that went up quite substantially from 23 to 24. And I understand the budget at these amounts because of what was actually realized in 23. Just wondering what's going on in reference to, first of all, the fees and permits. Um, the budget last year was 380. We actually realized 430,000. Um, why did that go up?
Um, Chuck, I have to imagine it's probably likely to the, the piece of this collecting on the, um, on development. All right, so those are the, oh, I'm sorry. I won't let it off.
Last year, the, uh, borough anticipated $160,000 in EMS fees, but we collected 302,000 in EMS fees last year. There was a change.
Well, that was my next question.
There's a recommendation from the, uh,
I'm up.
Oh, you're on fees and permit.
Where is?
So fees and permit, that would be, um, anything in regards to local fees, so not the construction fees or anything like that, that would be under a separate section. I have to pull the listing, but that's based off will be.
I just, when something goes up in collections, 20%, I
Civics, um, and then the mail.
I appreciate that. And then my next question was on the EMS, um, revenue that went up, um, almost 100% from the $160,000 that was.
We changed, uh, EMS bill providers, um, and because of that, uh, it's a recommendation by the director, um, we've been realizing more fees, they've been collecting, uh, better at, at collector rates. So I would, I would attribute it to that.
Thank you, Doug. On the appropriation end of it, um, Department of Law, um, the OE last year was 135,000 and this year it's 250,000. And I take it that's the ongoing litigation expenses.
Um, some are covered by the insurance company and some are based off of, or seeing, uh, from last year's budget. We spent about 224,000 last year, but the state will not allow you to go under that amount unless you have a reasonable expectation, so. Of the 2021 ordinance, uh, they, the Department of Community Affairs, so the Director of Community Affairs, our salaries there.
I was, I'm sorry, can I just, can I? I was under the impression that her budget came out of administration and not out of recreation. It does not, okay.
And then the OE will recreation has tripled from, um, 19,000 charge to 65,000 budget.
There was a request from Department Head, uh, the Director of Community Affairs to go at 70,000, um, and then it would help us.
The people can't hear you, there's all.
So what?
Yeah.
So what, what is being added program wise in the area of recreation?
I would have to pull the, uh, the request from the Director. I don't have that with me, but there was a request by the Director to increase those to have more recreational activities, or this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Rich O'Brien, Loudon Hudson Avenue. Good evening, everyone. I had a couple of questions, um, on sheet nine I, or grant in.
Um, they have put in there actually since introduction, we have gotten a number of, um, items for the grants to be put in. One, the, uh, the CPG grant, you cannot add, uh, grant items until the budget is adopted. That's the reason why the state has a chapter 159, um, the basically what the chapter 159 is a resolution that would be dedicated by Ryder to add an item to the budget. You can only add items to the grant section. So if, when you put in a grant, the state will ask you to provide the award, uh, either letter or the check. You don't have it, then you can't have it in the budget and they won't allow you to adopt the budget.
Makes sense. So the last year or the year before, when we did it, did it incorrect?
Um, no, there was a few. Last year, they didn't have any grants in there. The year before that, there was maybe three or four. It all depends on when you receive the grant.
So it's a matter of time.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. On sheet 17, there's a salary adjustment of 50,000. I was wondering what that was about.
So that was budgeted last year, um, and what it, it does is it anticipates for a, um, a retirement of an employee. So you would end up paying, uh, PTO time out of that, uh, because if you do not have something dedicated within the budget, you have to then take it out of the municipal, uh, parliamentary budget.
So leave approval?
Yes. Uh, in the amendment that the council will, uh, that will entertain this evening, um, it did decrease down to 27,000, but that is based off of a recommendation from the state.
Of projects, but I didn't see anything specific listed in sheets 48 through 40D.
So in the amendment, you will see, uh, some items to the water and sewer funds. That was in our Q, uh, QA, we're dubbing it QA, a report to the state. Um, however, we're not, uh, anticipating any new debt this year. We're going to repurpose debt that was already created, uh, prior to your approved. That's the reason why you don't see anything on there. So there is no new debt expected for this year. That's what that, those slides are.
But I noticed in the past, we would still list the projects in the next.
You, you can, and that is future projects. I do not know what a future project would be, um, the administration said here, uh, that will be a new amount. I, I can predetermine what.
Sure, you're not anticipating what you don't know yet. Okay. And Mr. Edgar talked about the 150% increase in our legal expenses, so I'll leave that alone. I happened to take a look at the last budget of the previous administration made deals back in 2020. And, and essentially I noticed that, that the difference in miscellaneous revenue from 20 to 24 is 2.2 million dollars, which essentially which Mayor spoke of three minutes ago. So I guess my question is looking at next year's budget. How are we going to plug that gap if there's no longer?
So what you're, what you have, there's about an additional, um, 500,000, give or take, then would happen when you relax, like whole pile of payments from the developer, um, that would then be built in. One of the items that I have discussed with council members is that since losing the health data policing contract, um, my understanding from looking at how that trended, when you had the element of contract that covers a percentage, actually covered for four police officers to be, um, added to the force. So one to each squad, um, in this, uh, budget, the past two years, you kept those, uh, people on it, even though you didn't have the revenue for all that.
The 588K.
So there's, there's about, it would be about $490,000 to cover, uh, which, uh, from a salary perspective, um, and that will be something that the next council and mayor has to forget. But the gap for the developers, highlight these additional.
I'm not talking about some pilot payment, I meant the contributions to three and a half million dollars they agreed to give us towards recreational purposes. We're running out of that money, correct?
Yes.
So part of keeping the budget flat this year, last year and the year before was built on that foundation. I didn't create the last two budgets I have been. Okay, so this budget. It's certainly a part. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Thanks, can you please put the sign away? Good evening.
Let's do it, I'm experienced about from here, so sorry to question. Has the state approved the budget yet?
So Jordan Allen is our reviewer. There were two items that we asked for, and that was, uh, JEIT. Um, we have a weird schedule that's recently had an emergency last year of $59,000 to pay that debt service. It's the separate dollar, the principal line, the interest line, which is changing on to work then. It's the separate dollar, the principal line, the interest line, which is changing on to work then. We want to say a percentage. Clearly, this went from zero to 26,000. It was more of a percentage that required that amendment to the budget. That is a sludge in the amendment resolution. Before we're doing the hearing this evening for original budget, proof to move forward for the amendment to go forward and then for adoption, the ironists.
So there's no other thing depending that may hold up?
But from the email that I got from you today, that we are clear. But we are clear to move forward.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, you may. You can proceed to pass the resolution to amend it tonight. Thank you.
Any other questions? Any council members have any questions?
If we were to decide to amend the budget between now and the vote, we have to go back to the state?
We would, you need to alert the state, yes. And that would trigger a complete new review. So you have to then go back and whatever we decide to change, then they would have to put other review.
But if they've already reviewed it once, it would just be, we'd be asking them to review?
No, they would do a complete review. That's an requirement for that. So that's usually, when you introduce a budget, that's why they have a statutory requirement for a month to go by before you have your adoption. You typically need to let the state know within two days of introduction if they're going to change anything. And then in the last two days, it's usually whatever comes that the state requires.
But we still have the option to do it. We would just have to put it under review.
Yes. I mean, I would need to know probably within looking at the holiday and then looking at. So looking at the holiday, it's not a holiday.
Thanks. Hey, Ross?
Yes. I have a real concern about the pilot monies kind of filling in on the budget line. That's going to run out, as Mr. O'Brien stated. So in essence, unless something's really done, we're in the negative.
I would say that in two percentage increases on the million dollars over the next couple of thirty years, two percentage increases is a pretty hefty amount of money.
Correct.
So, or, I'm sorry. So the concern and what we had to make up for over these past two budget years and utilize that funding was the loss. Because if we remember last year, we talked about the inside and outside interest. We have a shared service with Helmetta that was paying $700,000, right, outside. We were able to be outside the cap on the salary, on some of the salary in the budget. Unfortunately, we don't have someone else paying for that anymore. And we brought that in, and it was this administration's decision not to, you know, cut any, any positions or do anything. And I believe council would have agreed with us on that, that we really wanted to keep, you know, our staffing in-house. We now have to push that to inside the cap. And unfortunately, we don't want the taxes, or you can say, of it being inside the cap. So we've absorbed the cost of eliminating the Helmetta contracts, which was bringing in a significant revenue and allowing us to salivate outside the cap because of someone else paying. Does that make sense?
I understand completely.
Yeah.
But with the increase of fuel, the increase of insurance, with the increase, it just goes down the list. We are in the negative, and I understand it's going to be a tough hole to fill. I respect that. And the other essence, with the 3.5, the one payment, the one-time payment, where is that money? Is there an account? Do we have access to see that actual number? And following up on that, with the, what is it? What is it going to be used or was it going to be used for?
So that revenue payment came in last. We received a payment last year. We did hold it. We did use to balance some of our budget last year again. We made the decision that utilizing that funding was more important because there was so much discussion and talk about the recreational facility that we were going to use for. We made the decision to flatten our taxes, to keep the taxes flat, to give them back to the residents, to say, this is something that we're going to use. Yes, we appreciate the help. We appreciate the money, but that is, that essentially, we've been able to utilize that funding in order to, again, everything's skyrocketing. And the cost, and in the administration's opinion, is more important. And I think we've heard it many times, it's more important for us to, to really take care of our taxpayers and keep our costs as tight as we possibly can. So we have used that funding to ensure that this, that it is not affecting our taxpayers. And we don't have to utilize additional funding. And, you know, again, it's the administration's job. We brought in, you know, the lease agreement payments. We haven't had that before, right? And so as they, they were starting to trickle in, this is the first, I think, budget year that we are recognizing that amount, full amount. Because again, we can't recognize revenue that we didn't have. You know, again, EMS has done a very good job of us being able to build for what we were, what we were not. It was the administration's decision, really, to think about what was best for the community and the taxpayers and keeping their, their taxes as low as we can, telling them that other entities that, that owe us our tax. Bill, you go. So that's, that's what we, yes, that's.
I understand, and it's almost gone, and I go back to, it's going to be tough. I respect that, and thank you for all your hard work and the focus on that. Would we be able to get a quarterly report on that account at all, of what's left? How much is left, or any such as?
It says zero after this, is it not? Twenty-three was like 1.9 million, twenty-four, so. Go back to my first statement. Thank you for that submission.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Let's see, AAA on the screen, it's about from New Jersey. Just one question. What's the scenario? If eighty-five Main Street falls out, files suit, decides they can't do it, what happens then? So it's not guaranteed money if they decide to go bankrupt. I doubt that would happen, but I'm just saying it's a scenario.
The pilot is a 30-year pilot.
So they can't get out of the pilot?
They can't appeal.
Can't appeal?
Can't appeal a pilot. You can appeal the land tax, not appeal the pilot. The pilot is not going to burn.
I'm just saying.
That's not something that we deal with as bankruptcy, but under state law, a 30-year pilot, it cannot be a fee.
I understand this is one concern. You know, golf, it didn't come off, but it does.
That's why you should build up your fund account. So that's why this year, the fund account will be built up by an additional 200,000. As we have been kept only using 500,000 with the fund account prior years. For the last two years, you have flat at 500,000. You don't have, you shouldn't reserve other expenditures with this year's budget. I don't know if found in the audit from the 2022 budget that had to be budgeted this year. $59,000 of urgency, you will not have, you will not have any urgency. So that would be something that there's, several items that actually, if you break down accounts for future years, it's typically, I could do a two-year head, but.
Thank you. Make a motion to close the public portion.
All in favor?
At this time, we have two ordinances for a second reading.
Ordinance 2024-4, an ordinance amending and supplementing Part II General Legislation/ Land Development, Chapter 120, Land Development, Article 500, Stormwater Control, Preparing Zones and Steep Slopes to Incorporate Rules Preventing Stored Salt and Other Solid De-Icing Materials From Being Exposed to Stormwater in the Borough of Spotswood, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey. Ordinance 2024-5, an ordinance amending and supplementing Part II General Legislation/ Land Development, Chapter 120, Land Development, Article 500, Stormwater Control, Preparing Zones and Steep Slopes to Incorporate Rules to Address Tree Removal and Replacement. We also have three ordinances on second reading. I'm sorry, on first reading, public hearing set for Monday, June 17th, 2024. Ordinance 2024-6, an ordinance amending and supplementing the salary ordinance of the Borough of Spotswood entitled An Amendment to the Ordinance Fixing and Establishing Salaries and Wages of Certain Non-Bargaining Unit Employees of the Borough of Spotswood, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey. 2024-7, ordinance of the Borough of Spotswood, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, Establishing a Policy for Property Tax Exemption on Dwelling House of 100% Totally Disabled Veteran or Surviving Spouse. Ordinance 2024-8, an ordinance of the Borough of Spotswood, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, Authorizing the Borough Clerk to Place Upon the November 5th, 2024 General Election Ballot, A Question Asking Voters Whether or Not They Wish to Establish a Charter Commission to Study and Possibly Recommend Changes to the Borough's Form of Government. We also have Resolutions Under Consent Agenda, Resolutions 2024-74 through 2024-79. 2024-74 Resolution Authorizing the Execution of an Amended Local Agreement with the Township of South Brunswick to Provide the Lease of Mobile Data Computer Units and InfoCop Licenses. 2024-75, a resolution authorizing a refund of $1,939.18 to Ken Gorman for his duplicate reimbursement of overpayment of wages. 2024-76, a resolution authorizing a tax refund. 2024-77, resolution authorizing the Execution of an Amended Contract with the East Brunswick Animal Hospital. 2024-78, resolution authorizing the Execution of a Contract with the Borough of Spotswood's School Crossing Guards, Including the Changes Which Have Been Negotiated and Agreed Upon for the Years January 1, 2024 Through December 31st, 2027, and 2024-79, Paying the Bills. Who also.
I'd like to make a motion.
Going away. Okay. Yeah.
We also have the 2024 Municipal Budget Hearing Amendment and not adoption. And that's 2024-80, Resolution Amending the 2024 Budget of the Borough of Spotswood, County of Middlesex.
The change to the East Brunswick Animal Hospital was due to, I guess, a miscommunication by them. We had seen the numbers go as a $10 increase for both state and current. And they will not invite the trip, they will make a year trip. So from what I reported at the last meeting, it's a $10 increase. I think it's $10 now for mail cats, $6 for female cats. That was the requirement that they would sign the contract until we added the $10 increase. And a lot of the clarification and the year that they solved, they did.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation.
Oh. It's been.
Council President, can you use the caucus to talk on a couple items?
Sure.
Okay, so. Just to get my reason, I'm going to weigh in the caucus. We have an ordinance, 2024-6, is a salary ordinance. And I need to follow up with a couple people on here. I requested some changes weeks ago. Brandon, thank you for answering your component of it. And I know some colleagues also have concerns that we're only presented over the weekend. That took priority over mine. So let's all table them together, perhaps in a regular. And then an item from the resolutions list is the payment of bills. I was away this weekend, which you'll hear about later in the night. And then my, today, my sister got back from her honeymoon, and they were good. Since that, so I couldn't get in to look at the bills. So as unprepared, unprepared for that, I'm wondering if a similar courtesy is going to be extended to me, to table it, or if I should abstain? Yes, ma'am.
I can't wait two months.
Okay, I was just double checking about, yeah, that's fine. I'm going to have to abstain. Because I know a resident who likes us to look at each bill, and I didn't get to do that this weekend.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to open to the public to speak about anything that is on the list here regarding the ordinances or the resolutions.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. The public comment point for the Spotswood Borough Council meeting is to allow the public to bring to council's attention their concerns or comments in accordance with NJ SA-10, 10, 4-12A, as well as Spotswood Borough Ordinances 2-18 and 2-19. Acceptance time consent of the council president. Each person addressing the council, in the case of a resolution, shall limit their remarks to three minutes. And in the case of an ordinance, shall limit their remarks to five minutes total for the meeting. No person shall direct any remarks or questions to any specific council member except by permission of the council president. Any council member through the council president may choose to answer a question, but they are not obligated to do so. All persons wishing to address the council shall do so from the podium or other locations specified by the council president. Each person addressing the council must identify themselves by name and address. If said person is representing a business or organization, they shall further state whether their comments are their personal view or those of the group they represent.
Diane Charles, with 29 on Stage Road. As usual, I have some questions on the bill list. On the second page, down towards the bottom, there's RFP Solutions, Professional Services rendered. What did they do for us?
Which one is that? I'm sorry. What number is that?
I'm sorry, 2400614. It's towards the bottom. It's for $8,601, I think. Eight thousand six hundred and sixty-one. Just having glasses too. Nobody knows what they did.
Checking right now.
Okay, how about another one while we're waiting?
What you got?
On page three, again, towards the bottom, 2400652, statewide insurance fund, a deductible for claim number, whatever, for 25,000 plus. Who's that for?
Johnson, for the Johnson lawsuit.
For Brittany?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so just the, that RFP got.
This is the buildings and grounds. It is a emergency install of two cat six tables, the municipal building and the trailer extending data. Did you have any other information on? It was for when they had the trailer out there to bring phone to data through a separate lease communications. So we never paid. So it was an old bill from when they had the trailer after the plant.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, because the invoice date was 9/13/22.
Wow. Oh, man.
That's what I didn't know about. Sorry to stick over.
Good evening, everyone. Senator Chief Plutodra.
Good evening.
There's two places that.
There's two places that Bruno Associates shows up. Once for twelve sixty five, once for six hundred something, I believe. What are they for?
They are grant administrator. They administer the grant programs so that they apply for various grants for town.
Okay, thank you.
Can I, can I jump on that for a sec?
Go.
Can you tell me how many grants that Bruno Associates has recommended that we applied for up until this point?
I think they do a report in each, yeah, invoice. I don't have time for that.
Yeah, I didn't get to see it either, so I don't know if it's on the invoice. But I'd like to, I would like to have a report as to how many grants Bruno is actually recommending that we apply for and whether we have or have not. Done so.
They send us every grant.
Right, that's what we pay them for.
You're on the list?
Yeah, off the top of my head, the two that we most recently finished was the AFG grants that were the buyer and the investment.
Okay.
I know that was two items that we were working on for the last.
And that came from Bruno?
I would assume, yes, they provided recommendation. I sent it out in part heads and then the board came back with their recommendations and then they went forward with what they were to acquire. The PO should probably tell you exactly what specifics, because I only had the here, Professional Services rendered for page.
Okay, I have it. Thank you.
Top of the second page, ASCAS. It's typically music licensing fee. Why would we pay anything?
So I did wire this. This is now probably three years worth of fees that have built up. It landed on, I guess, wrong finance saying what is, I acquired the company. Anytime that you have the free licensing, you have the any type of reported messaging you have to pay for a licensing of those musics to be played at your municipal. You also need to pay for any whole music or things like that. So I got a full explanation. And we have utilized the license in order to play music at our events.
That's the New York County VA.
So this is an item that was approved the last August. I don't know why it didn't happen till now. We were double, one, double bid, no, we double bid for the same service plan and we're using one of our officers, we lost one, it was EPA. They then sent back the check paying us, we deposited it, and then finance said we did receive the check. They sent us another check, we deposited it. This was approved in the August meeting to take them back. I don't know why they didn't, made it until now that the check never picked. But that is what went out to them as per that recent question.
And this covers overtime with the officers or time?
It was a double, yeah, so the, the.
When the officers were on loan to the department, it covers part of their expenses?
Yes.
And then finally, if my math is correct, I have a hundred thousand, a hundred thousand five hundred nineteen legal fees on the bill this month, excluding planning zoning and, oh, cancel. Hundred thousand five hundred nineteen dollars. One month. How about a breakdown of some of this?
Actually, there's multiple ones in there, but I don't have to go back.
Well, the first ones would be Borough Council. Are these for this year or last year? This year? Matthew Sage for two thousand.
He is the holder of the banner.
Okay, so we're down to ninety eight thousand. Reynon Coglin?
That is Labor Council.
Is that because lawsuits that are going on is that what they're looking into, or are they doing labor, any labor attorney? They're doing labor matters, right?
Anything that's been handled by a lawsuit was then turned over to the insurance company, insurance company assigns the jury.
Bob Smith and Associates.
He is the prosecutor.
Okay. Yep. If there's a way for you guys to put in something on these that explains it. Robert Smith and Associates, Municipal Prosecutor, and UAT and ROS, and something that would kind of explain it where people could look at it and go, oh, okay. That would probably be a good position. On the, is the salary ordinance tabled? Or is it going to continue on?
To be determined.
To be determined, okay. So looking at the salary ordinances, everything in red, is that what all the changes like?
So that is the change of that policy to the interest.
Only the ones in red?
Yes. So I provided counsel, there was actually Councilman Richie, we were on counsel at the time, ordinance two thousand and twenty one dash eleven, which restructured the Department of Community Services. This ordinance was never codified into the municipal code. So I had no clue that it was ever passed. Obviously, I wasn't hearing what people want. It reshaped the department titles. And I believe that the question came up at the last meeting about various directors. Well, in one department you can have various director, then the one director, and then people underneath that person. And that people are asking questions, well, why is somebody listed as a coordinator, but they're listed in salary ordinance as a director? This was all mandated be changed by the passing of ordinance two thousand and twenty one dash eleven, but it never made it to be salary ordinance. So I'm reviewing that with the clerk and getting that, that's what I sent an email explaining to the council saying this I was unaware of, and this is my recommended changes that you should table that first reading of your, of salary ordinance and move forward with a restructure of the salary ordinance to match ordinances that are already on the books and should have been filed.
Okay, so no one's, no one's lost a position where we've gone from the Director of Recreation to now part-time coordinator, it's the same job.
Just we call it's a recreation coordinator, not a director of recreation.
Alright, thank you.
Beauty, Colin Rondo, I'm Alfrid. The twenty five thousand dollars payment from the GIFT deductible, does that mean that we settle into Johnson lawsuit?
I can't see that.
No, it sounds like it's a deductible. For one lawsuit. Yes, we have currently what, thirteen? Thank you.
Who's getting up there first?
Absolutely, Mr. Spotswood of New Jersey, just going back to Mr. Ronald's question about the claim settlement. You pay a settlement, doesn't that really close?
It's not a settlement, it's a document.
It's a deductible payment.
Over your share of the settlement.
No, there's no settlement. You know something I don't have?
Okay, we'll put that aside for a second. I have a bigger concern. I need you to explain the divergence with the hundred percent disability for veterans, what's going on with that? As a veteran myself, as a guy who's been exposed to light water, as a naval firefighter, what's the problem? Why are we establishing a policy?
So, Basili, we just actually got an explanation about how this works tonight. So I believe we're going to make a motion to table it so that we can review it a little bit further prior to.
Thank you, Mr. Hager.
Chuck Baker, sixty five, Carney Drive. A question on Resolution two thousand and twenty four dash seventy eight. When I went online, I saw the resolution itself. I didn't see a copy of the contract or the changes that are affirmed in the contract, and I'm just wondering what were the changes in the contract?
You're talking about the abnormal.
No.
The crossing guards?
The crossing guard contracts.
We could start with there were salary increases in their contract.
You have the percent increase. What was that percentage?
There's a request from the Charleston Guards stating that their salaries were not in conformance with surrounding towns. You cannot, you reach around towns with, there are those arms, basically, when your, when your tax base would be. But the agreed upon item would be a seventy five cent increase in the first year plus a three percent on top of that, so it's an adjustment year. And then a three percent increase in year two, year three, and year four. There there is an increase to their their clothing allowance went from five twenty five to five fifty. There was discrepancies within, one section said if they go to a school event, that it's not a mandatory two hours, but then in another item, the chief orders them to go to work or something along those lines, that is a mandatory two hours, so we set everything, other than them being out of the street, being across the park, to be a mandatory two hours. And then some cleanup items, those are the high level to be added to the charges.
Thank you.
I've got a question. The public is on. We are tearing these ordinances apart. To Homer in the crowd. If council authorizes this, there will be additional seats for election in November, where five people will study if we change the form of government in Spotswood, which is well and fine. However, my concern is why don't we have the residents get the signatures? The twenty percent of the voting population, which is very doable, and is permitted by law. That if we pass on second reading, it will be on the ballot and the signatures are not needed. For it to, for the question to be on the ballot to begin with. They need to get, the individuals need to get their own signatures later in the summer, if council authorizes it.
Right. But you're asking, it's ten percent, it's not twenty, it's twenty. I was under the impression it was ten. Is it twenty? So we, I had asked to see that at the last meeting, that I would be interested in seeing a twenty percent as well.
The signature?
I did.
Because it's a, it is a big deal. You know what I mean? And people need to get their steps in. You got, you got the parade, you got Fourth of July. Then you could be gathering these signatures. That's my thought.
One of the things, if the council authorizes this ordinance to go through, it puts the question on the ballot for everyone. It does relieve us of trying to get twenty percent of the signatures, which I believe is about two hundred and thirty, two hundred and forty signatures, which really won't take long at all. But it shows that the council is pretty highly looking into this to see if we can't do something better than we have now. The people that run for election, the people that will look to become the partners committee, minimum of five people have to run, and my understanding, Jenny might be able to tell me if I'm wrong, it's going to be basically the same thing as when you run for those seat in town. You have to get officials, you have to get signatures. There is a formula for how many signatures are required for people that are going to run. I just don't recall what that formula is right now, whether it's ten votes, fifty votes, or fifty signatures. But any of the five or more people can run. In the end, when you vote for this, you can vote for it, against it, or not vote for it at all. But you would ask, even if you didn't vote for this, you would still ask for them to select five people on the list. So I, personally, I believe the council should back this. I think it's a good thing to do to look at it. Who's to say that anything is going to change?
Right.
But it's a review. It's an over discussion, it's held publicly. And I don't see where any of this would be a detriment anywhere. My sense.
Thank you.
I have a question. Sure. Thank you. Sorry. I'd like to go back to Bruno Associates. So I'm looking at these two purchase orders, and in each purchase order, Bruno Associates has suggested between twenty two and twenty four grants. On the average, how many do you tend to follow up with? So we're paying Bruno Associates to suggest approximately twenty to thirty grants each time we out of those twenty or thirty suggestions. How many does administration actually follow through and say, yes, we want to apply these?
Also depends, so they do, they refer, they do the law, see here. Which is what they're for, then they, they don't put it forth, then they don't give the cost to an administrative level. So one was the lantern block, that the I book together, that was in terms of, there's other departments that put in I can't, I can't give you an answer, because I don't have paper in front of me of all the different items that they've done.
And some of the grants, Councilwoman, that they would send to us and the council would, let's go, well, they're, they don't apply to us, like they're, like they do send us some things that don't necessarily apply to.
We just got a grant to help fund for an SRO, it's just, go provide SROs.
Okay, and some of these grants that are recommended are listed twice. So they're listed on one purchase order for one bill, and then they're listed again on another purchase order for another bill. So they're billing us twice for their recommendations?
I don't have these paper in front of me, and if
Okay, I could, I might be reading it wrong, but I'm looking at this purchase order for six hundred and five, and I'm looking at this purchase order for twelve hundred, and the same grants are listed on both pages as recommended, which is basically what we pay them for, correct? Them to find those grants for us?
You're not paying them to find the grant, they're also working on the application with the department.
Okay.
So they gather the information. So like with the AFG, the fire team have to give also service, various other items, that's then compiled and narrated that those things are done by the actual brand coordinator at Bruno instead of the, or the fire team, yes.
Need to look at these, because these are almost exact. Can you look at these?
I was going to give you my February report, so we can save some paper, but yeah.
There, there. Yeah, I would just ask you to look at those again, because both purchase orders have the same list of grants. They're actually like the same grant report, so I'm, I'm just curious as to where the difference would be. You email.
Thank you.
Upon further review, that's what you're saying? Hold the bill now? That makes sense.
I'm not even voting, I'm complicated.
No, I don't think you're complicating it at all. I think you're making a point.
Yeah, I would have to sit down and look at this further. I would, I would probably vote for the bill list and abstain from the Bruno bills, is what I'm thinking.
If we don't pay them this month, what's going to happen? Upon review, right? That's a fair, right? Okay, I'm going to suggest we hold the Bruno list. That's my suggestion, because to give time, ample fair time to review a finding. And if there is, it sounds to me that there are two things going on here. First, we need to find some future cuts. Right? Concerns here. And there is a concern. So that's one. And two, how are we getting enough from the grants as we're paying this company? Or is it a wash? Which do we really need this company besides coordination? That's all I'm saying. Pull the bill.
I'm going to make a motion to pull two purchase orders off of the bill resolution at this time, twenty-four dash zero zero four eight nine and twenty-four dash zero zero six three one, which are the two Bruno associate bills. So I'm making a motion to pull those two bills off the bill list.
When that time comes, I'll second.
Oh, we need to close the question first. Make a motion to close the public.
iPhone one, can you please unmute?
There we go. Hi, guys. It's Chief Draco from the Fire Department. I just wanted to shed some light on you guys to help Brandon out here with regards to Bruno. So we dealt with them for the AFG. The grant that we applied for is somewhere in the ballpark of a hundred and eighty, two hundred thousand dollars if we're awarded it. It has, I forget the actual percentage that comes out of it and all as far as a town share. But the grant process for the AFG is extremely competitive and extremely lengthy and a crazy process to go through and all to apply for. There's a lot of information, a lot of structure. The forms are very particular to even be competitive towards it. So I would say if, if what I'm assuming from what's there, I would assume that the process or the bills aren't just for grant finding. I could tell you that I had to work with this individual for multiple hours across the time. So I would assume it was for services rendered. And basically, aside from information that we have to provide them, they completely handle filling out and processing the grant requests through the, through FEMA. And like I said, it's extremely complicated. It would be extremely hard for myself or anybody who doesn't do this as, as a full-time thing to apply for. And like I said, as far as what it goes, us on our equipment side, we're talking, we have multiple capital issues to take care of in this town in hundreds of thousands of dollars. So grant services are something that is extremely worth it.
Okay.
Thank you.
My name is Osman Dickis. I'm a resident in town. I'm also a police officer and member of two two five. I'm here to speak on my own today. I've been thinking this whole time for what I'm going to say. Just so much.
I just wanted, just wanted to make sure that this is, is this about either the ordinances or the, or the resolutions? Otherwise, we'll, we'll open to the public for everything.
I'm sorry. Yeah.
In, in the, in the regulating, which will be in a few minutes. No problem. Thank you. Hey, make a motion to close to the public.
All in favor? All in favor?
Okay. This meeting was called for Monday, May twentieth, twenty twenty-four at seven thirty PM at Borough Hall located at seventy-seven Summerhill Road, Spotswood, New Jersey, pursuant to the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA ten four dash eight B. The public may choose to attend this meeting electronically via Google Meet. This meeting was advertised on the Spotswood website and in the home news tribute.
Councilman Kramer?
Here.
Councilman Lasko?
Here.
Councilwoman Schwartz?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Zaborni?
Here.
Council President Legakis?
Here.
Mayor Palmer?
Here.
This time I ask everybody to please rise and solicit a flag. Okay, we have two ordinances for second reading.
I will take a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-four dash four.
I could make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty-four dash four.
Second.
Councilman Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Lasko?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schwartz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Zaborni?
Yes.
And Council President Legakis?
Yes.
I will take a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-four dash five on second reading.
Make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty-four dash five.
Second it.
Councilman Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Lasko?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schwartz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Zaborni?
Yes.
Council President Legakis?
Yes.
Next, we have, I'll take a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-four dash six on first reading. Oh, and, and shoes. I'm sorry.
I'd like to make a motion to table ordinance twenty-four dash six.
Second.
Councilman Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Lasko?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schwartz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Zaborni?
Yes.
And Council President Legakis?
Yes.
Next, I will take a motion to introduce ordinance twenty twenty-four dash seven on first reading, public hearing set for May, for June seventeenth.
I'd like to make a motion to table twenty-four, twenty twenty-four dash seven.
Second.
Councilman Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Lasko?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schwartz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Zaborni?
Yes.
Council President Legakis?
Yes.
Next, I will take a motion to introduce ordinance twenty twenty-four dash eight on first reading, public hearing set for June seventeenth, twenty twenty-four.
I'd like to make a motion to introduce ordinance twenty-four dash eight on first reading.
Second it.
Councilman Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Lasko?
Yes, only for the reason to get discussion on it next month, where I will not be going for it then. So yes, tonight to advance.
Councilwoman Schwartz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Zaborni?
Yes.
Council President Legakis?
Yes.
Next, I will, excuse me, take a motion to adopt resolutions twenty, twenty twenty-four dash seventy-four through twenty twenty-four dash seventy-nine.
Make a motion to adopt twenty twenty-four dash seventy-four through twenty twenty-four dash seventy-nine.
Second it.
Councilman Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Lasko?
Yes, please mark me as an extension for seventy-nine of bills.
Councilwoman Schwartz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Zaborni?
Yes, but on the payment of bills on the, and forgive me on the numbers for what we just discussed, Bruno, and well, reasoning and just further explanation and discovery, I may use that term, not for any personal reason, just so, and I don't know the number. Apologize.
So you want, you want to abstain from those? I didn't. No, we didn't vote on it. I never, I never went through. After the chief, I'm fine first.
You're, you're fine?
You're, yeah. I, after hearing from the chief, I'm, I'm good for this month.
I was just public support, so I'll say everything.
And Council President Legakis?
Yes.
Next, I will take a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-four dash eighty, which is the resolution amending twenty twenty-four of the borough of Spotswood County Middlesex.
Make a motion to pass twenty twenty-four dash eighty.
Second.
Councilman Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Lasko?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schwartz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Zaborni?
Yes.
And Council President Legakis?
Yes.
Specifically that calls for hearing for all the amendments at our next meeting.
Thank you. Okay, we have three proclamations for tonight. The first one is a proclamation celebrating the fifty-fifth annual Municipal Clerks Week. Councilwoman Zaborni?
Whereas the office of the municipal clerk, a time honored and vital part of local government exists throughout the world, and whereas the office of the municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the office of the municipal clerk provides a professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels, and whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of the neutrality and partiality, rendering equal service to all, whereas the municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community, whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations, whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the municipal clerk. Now therefore, the Borough Spotswood Council, on behalf of the mayor and all the citizens of Spotswood, do recognize the week of May fifth through May eleventh, twenty twenty-four as Municipal Clerks Week, and further extend appreciation to our acting municipal clerk, Jenny Service, and to all professional municipal clerks for their vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent.
Okay, next we have a proclamation celebrating National Police Week. Whereas National Police Week in America was created to honor and recognize the sacrifice and contributions made by police officers in communities both large and small. And whereas the National Police Week held every year in May was created in nineteen sixty-two through a proclamation issued by then-President John F. Kennedy. And whereas our community will always appreciate and commend the risk officers take every day to ensure our community's laws are properly enforced and that public safety is ensured. And whereas, now more than ever, the community also appreciates and encourages the community involvement facilitated by our police officers to both better serve and instill mutual trust, comrades, and positive relationship among our residents of Borough Spotswood. And whereas, police engage with and serve the public in the most varied and wide-ranging manner, and their efforts do not go unnoticed. And whereas, the Borough Spotswood honors the valor, service, and dedication of all police officers, and publicly salutes the service of each and every one of our Spotswood police officers. Now therefore, be it proclaimed, the Borough Spotswood Council, on behalf of the mayor and all of the citizens of Spotswood, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the weeks, the week does hereby proclaim the weeks, put in there twice, of May twelfth through May eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, as National Police Week in the Borough Spotswood, and encourages all residents to join the borough in a recognition of the services, sacrifices, and the efforts of the Spotswood Police Department makes to best serve the community. And I salute you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we have one more proclamation celebrating the fiftieth anniversary of EMS Week. And I will ask Councilwoman Schwartz to please read this one.
Whereas in nineteen seventy-four, President Gerald Ford authorized Emergency Medical Services Week to celebrate EMS, its practitioners, and the important work they do in responding to medical emergencies. At the time, EMS was, was a fledging profession, and EMS practitioners were only beginning to be recognized as a critical component of emergency medicine and the public health safety net. And whereas, emergency medical services are a vital public service, and whereas the members of emergency medical service teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas, access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas, the members of the emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas, it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of the emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore, be it resolved, that the Borough Spotswood Council, on behalf of the mayor and all of the citizens of Spotswood, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of May nineteenth through the twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, as Emergency Medical Services Week, and extend appreciation to all of the Borough emergency medical technicians, together with EMS Director Doug Service, for their conscientious emergency medical services to the residents of the Borough Spotswood, and mutual aid to residents of our neighboring towns.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask each council member if they have any reports. We'll start with Councilwoman Schwartz.
Good evening, everybody. The library board has decided to change their meeting dates from the third Thursday of each month to the second Thursday of each month. The meetings for the rest of the year will be as follows: June thirteenth, July eleventh, August eighth, September twelfth, October tenth, November fourteenth, and December twelfth, all starting at seven PM. The new circulation desk is installed, and it is beautiful. So if you haven't seen it, please stop by the library and check it out. It's getting a ton of compliments. And I don't even know how to go about this, but the LMXAC consortia is getting a new ILS and a catalog, which will impact services consortia-wide until June thirteenth. So basically what this means is from June fourth to June thirteenth, the only thing that the libraries will be able to do is check items out, and all delivery will be halted. And that also means checking out in between different libraries will also be halted while they redo their system. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay, good. You're shaking your head. I'm still trying to process all that. So that is our library. The following is happening with our recreation department right now. The fishing derby is set for Saturday, June first, with snacks and awards for those great touches. The car show is set for Saturday, June fifteenth, with a DJ and a food truck. And Spark in the Park is scheduled for Friday, July fifth, from five o'clock.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kramer?
So I really don't have much to talk about when it comes to our town of engineers because it's basically the same thing for the last several months. But what I do have to talk about is my daughter was involved in a motor vehicle accident on Saturday. And I wanted to thank our PD, our Fire Department, and our EMS, because they do this every single day, and they don't get thanks for it. Well, let me tell you, I appreciate all of them for taking care of my daughter. Thank you.
Thank you.
She okay?
She okay?
Make sure. Councilman Lasko?
Hi, everybody. I have two items. One I teach you with earlier, I kind of mentioned. So I went to Washington DC over the weekend, and I did something similar when I was there eighteen months ago. I visited the Vietnam War Memorial Wall. This time, I was able to etch the, the four names of our fallen from Spotswood. That was Gary R. Buttonbound, Otto W. Bowman Jr., James B. Heffron, and Dennis Crane. So I thought that was pretty neat. It was very busy that day. I did drive all that way in the rain down to DC just for East Brunswick to have a replica memorial wall coming into town, which many of you probably read today over the weekend. It is an eighty percent replica of the DC wall, which is still very massive. So kudos to East Brunswick for that. And just the other item, we're getting into the busy season. I hope to see everybody around town. Congrats to all graduates, whether high school, college, or continuing our education. And I've grown to like being up. And I've grown to like being up here during this time of year and the warm weather, and I hope to see you all in a week or two.
And just to let you know, if you want to see the wall come in, it's coming in. If you haven't seen, I know a couple of people have shared, it's coming in Wednesday morning. Is that correct? Up Summer Hill? Up Summer Hill, yes.
Yeah, from the mall, and then it's doing a round to.
Yeah. It's passing around Facebook, so take a look around. I know it's on there. I saw it today.
Thank you. Councilwoman Schwan?
A lot of good things happening over at the high school and all the Spotswood schools. So the next meeting will be tomorrow night for a Spotswood Board of Education over at the media center in the high school, 7:00 P.M. start. This Thursday is prom. High school junior senior prom will be this Thursday. Senior awards, June 6th. Graduation is June 20th, along with all the other schools for that same week. So they're having an exciting season, as you can imagine, over there. Culture Heritage will be meeting again this Thursday, it's coming Thursday, over at the VFW on Daniel Road at 7:00 P.M. And as I always state, take a look at the shop at St. Peter's. Check them out for good deals. Always benefiting many programs and many people in need throughout our communities as well. And happy spring, everybody, and proud to serve.
Thank you. May I, Obama?
I have the budget.
Thank you. I just want to make one announcement. We were able to meet earlier today about the Memorial Day Services Parade on Monday. Excuse me. I believe, Tim, can we post the schedule on the website at some point? So the Memorial Day Services will kick off around 7:45 a.m. and go up until the parade kicks off at 1:00. So hopefully, everybody will be able to make it out there. We're hoping for a beautiful day. I think we talked about it. We planned on having a nice day, so we hope to see everybody out there. Thank you. Okay, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to open to the public.
Second?
Uh, favor.
Hi. This time, you can come up, speak about anything that you want to speak about.
Right back to the day, because I'm a police officer and I'm resident in town. I'd like to apologize for my premature. Obviously, it's my first time speaking in front of everyone, so I'm a little bit nervous. Thinking about what to say this whole time, and even though I bought myself some time, I still didn't think about what to say. But I think there's some things that you guys need to hear on my own behalf, on the other side of things. I was made aware of this spectacle, I guess, two days ago. It wasn't this first time around, it wasn't voted by us. I don't know if that was intended to or not, but I'm getting sick and tired of everything that's going on here. Tired of billboards, tired of lawsuits, tired of news interviews, all of it. When I saw Mr. Scavani's name up there, I got a little annoyed. I don't care what anyone says, he's not an evil guy. When a baby died in my arms, less than half the membership reached out to me to make sure that I was okay. And even fewer than that continued to keep up with me to see if I was okay. John Scavani was one outside of that membership that continued to keep in touch with me to see if I was okay. So he's a good man. Ever since the recent departure of three of our members, it's been like a breath of fresh air around here. Big time. None of us are getting along with people that we never thought we'd get along with. And it's kind of hard to say. When I stepped down as PBA president, one of my executive members even mentioned how they were afraid of certain people retaliating against us. Shortly after I stepped down, that started to happen. I can't talk about the disciplinary matters that have been dished out, but it's pretty ridiculous. A lot of cops will tell you, they can't get you on the road, they'll get you inside. Your boots are untied, your uniform looks like crap, they'll get you there. So I got rid of twice. The response I got from my own meeting was, well, you're kind of on your own, you can breathe on your own. But if you do, you're gonna have a bigger bullseye in the back. So these are some of the things that we deal with. So rather than sit and do nothing, I felt it was necessary to tell you guys, let's get moving on. There's a lot of people that aren't speaking up. There's a lot of people that think that they just have to continue and go with your grain, because if you don't go with your grain, you end up like me. I don't know what's gonna happen to me in the future. I don't know what's gonna happen to me tomorrow after this. I just really don't care anymore. I want to come in and do my job and to serve the public to the best of my ability. I'm tired of the political agendas. I'm tired of the lawsuits. I just want to work. The public deserves better. They deserve better than being disciplined for criticizing a $20,000 key box. $20,000 rather than using those funds to get things like ballistic helmets, which kind of just fell right into the rock. So I don't really have much more to say. Again, I apologize for my premature coming up here. Hope things get better.
Nothing to apologize for. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Raymond Heyduke. I'm the Chief of Police, South President Township, also the Deputy Manager. Part of my duties, I'm the Legal Aid and Arbitration Committee for the New Jersey State Chiefs. I am here in that capacity, representing the state chiefs and the Middlesex County Chiefs on behalf of Chief Corpusero. Many of my colleagues are obviously here in attendance, because they're very concerned about what is going on, what has taken place with him. I've been a police officer for 36 years, in 18 years as a chief of police, and I can tell you, I have never seen a mess like this in my life. I, my, part of what else I do, I have police practice as expert, I give expert testimony. A lot of things I do deal with as internal affairs, and I'm a hearing officer. And I'm gonna get into some of that, but I want to point some of these things out to the council, to the governing body right now, because only you could do something at this court. There's some legal facts regarding the situation, but our association clearly believes that the unlawful suspension of Chief Corpusero. Middlesex County Prosecutor did not undertake or handle this disciplinary investigation or even investigate some of the charges lodged as required by law and the New Jersey Attorney General guidelines on internal affairs policies and procedures. It's just discipline, all right? Some of the things he was clear of. The prosecutor's office has already looked into and exonerated Chief Corpusero on many of the charges lodged. The suspension, it's just obvious. It's political. It's retaliatory rather than what is statutory required by law. Straight up, the mayor and Mr. Umba have it out for Chief Corpusero. They have it out for Captain Mayo, and I really don't know much about Officer Sasso, but I suspect that's the same. Most of these charges were lodged in violation of the 45-day rule, which also clearly applies to this matter, right? The 45-day rule is simple. If you have enough information to charge somebody, you must do something. You can't wait, you can't punt it, you can't have extended bureaucratic delays, right? I looked at the charges. They're not worth paper written on. Whoever wrote those charges can't get your money back. That's how bad they are. Every police officer in New Jersey, including the chief of police, has certain rights, all right? We're entitled to due process. We're not just subject to discipline at the whim of a mayor or a business administrator. I'm gonna give you a briefing on a statute, NJSA 4814-147. You might want to look that up. It says, and it's synopsis, except otherwise provided by law, no permanent member or officer, this is including the chief, I answered that, of the police department shall be removed from his office, employment, or position for political reasons. For any cause regulations established by government or the police department enforced or so shall such member be suspended, removed, fined, or reduced from running in office or position there, except for just cause. All right, there's a lot of legal jibberdoo, but I'm gonna give you a very brief lesson on what it is. There are seven standards to discipline somebody. You need just cause. You can't just wake up and say, I want to get out of here because I'm not getting what I want. You need a reasonable rule or order. All right, there's some rules in there that I've read the charges. They're reasonable. But one, the chief was charged with the PBA putting stuff on Facebook, right? You want another? You got 13 lawsuits? You want 14? I have to chief, go after some, the PBA from exercise in the First Amendment law, right? That is one of, that might be my favorite stupidest charge. That's how. It's ridiculous. It's embarrassing, and I cannot believe an attorney wrote that. All right, they need notice. They need notice of what's going on. He had no idea. You need a sufficient investigation. There was no investigation, with the exception of the ones he was clear of. You need a fair investigation. I don't need to explain that. But anyone here who's ever being accused of anything or a crime or an administrative, you have a right as a resident, as a citizen of the United States, to respond. It's established in Supreme Court law, all right? You have that right. You have a right to respond. Chief never had to, they called him in and said, this is what you did. Get out of here. No louder, no hearing. He's still waiting on a hearing. You're supposed to be proof. There's no proof that any of this took place. Equal treatment, there needs to be an appropriate penalty, but we're not gonna get to that, obviously, yet, because we all know what's gonna happen. They're gonna hire a hatchet person, and they're gonna probably fire all three of them. So there's no legal basis for these charges, and it's obvious that's an attempt to remove Chief of Corpusero from office so the mayor and the business administrator can exact past revenge, revenge for past disciplinary actions taken against someone, like a family member, and then agree with it, okay? And to take control of the day-to-day operations of the police department. I have seen approximately, I think, over 60 hearings now as a hearing officer. If you hire a fair and objective hearing officer, he is going to dismiss them before the hearing on a motion. I've done that before. You need a fair investigation. There's numerous procedural violations. Mayor Palmer and Business Minister Umba, they failed to understand and acknowledge that Chief Corpusero, like every New Jersey police chief, has two bosses. That's by statute. They can't, but they, part of that is the administration can't control the day-to-day operation. Only the chief does. This is established since 1970. There's a law enforcement chain in command. As I said, the chief has two bosses. Law enforcement matters, chief of police answers to the prosecutor. It's no event, crime, anything to do with investigations, internal affairs. I'll get into that in a minute. Non-issue, no answer to inappropriate authority, budget. You know, what needs to be done in the police department to run it in an orderly fashion, with the exception of non-operational issues, they can hold the chief within the budget. Those are reasonable expectations. It's clear they're overstepping, and the root cause for these bogus charges served on Corpusero, Chief Corpusero, Captain Mayo, is because they both refused to be punished and to do their bidding. That's just what it is. Nothing more. Chief Responsibility Act was established by law many years ago, I believe, 1981, in order to stop this type of political interference. And I'm gonna give you a brief synopsis. The chief has the absolute right, by statute, to administer and enforce rules and regulations, directives, and discipline, you know, of the force of its officers and personnel. Well, already, the chief's been disciplined, because he didn't discipline somebody, probably didn't even discipline. They have the exercise and discharge function powers of the duties of the force. They prescribe duties and assignments of all subordinates of duties enforced. Well, that's part of one of the disciplines, because he assigned somebody as an acting sergeant. Maybe he was told, well, someone else was on the list. He had a valid reason, but he didn't get a chance to explain it. Delegate his authority as he deemed necessary for the efficient operation, and he has to report at least a month. The Chief Responsibility Act was enacted to grant statutory powers to police chiefs by mandating that they shall be in charge of their departments and provide him for specific duties and responsibilities and to prevent interference by elected officials individually in the operation of the police force. That has happened, the statute being violated. Now, Mayor Palmer and Business Administrator Umba are interfering with the chief's duties. They need to stay out of the day-to-day operations of the police department. They want total control over Chief Corpusero or whoever's going to sit in that seat. And for obvious reasons, you need to have it stopped. There are numerous incidents of the interference, and I know everyone probably wants to go home eventually. I could sit up here for a very long time and discuss them with you, but I'm just gonna highlight a few of them. The business administrator was threatening to tell me the vehicle from the Sal Lake that was being held as part of an investigation. Chief Corpusero called me. What do I do? I said, did you, he said, no, he just sent me a threatening email, move it. I said, this is what you do. Send him an email back and tell him to put him in handcuffs and arrest him. That's what I have to do. That was, that's the obvious answer. You don't interfere with a police investigation. It's also demanding IA confidential files, all right? The prosecutor had to step in. The mayor, while on police radio or one of the police channels, had access to the police department. I know the prosecutor did step in on the access to the police department. Now, the business administrator has this fixation on cameras in the police department, and I am probably assumed to spy on police officers. Why? I don't know. It's improper for many reasons. You have domestic violence. You get a confidential informant, all right? No one's saying cares about the front of the building or, but places that, inside the building, can't have it. Now, I don't know what type of background info the governing body was privy to prior to hiring. Brain the number. You should know that two previous towns, Lumberton and Manchester, he had an issue with the chief because he wanted access to the cameras. I don't know what the fixation is, but the prosecutor in Burlington and Ocean County, and I have the letters, well, I don't have one of those, had to step in and direct him to cease and desist. Now, history repeats itself in Spotswood, because he was advised again by our prosecutor. That's a really damn. All right? So, Mr. Umba, congratulations. You're the only business administrator that I know in New Jersey that has had three prosecutors tell you to not get on. That's impressive.
I would like to say prosecutor could be this letter, but.
Okay. I said two. I know two. I may have three, but I have the emails from Lumberton. Can I, are you cutting in my time? You're not being respectful. Say what, man, or I'm done. No, I haven't. No, I haven't. Mr. President, can I speak, please? Can you keep it? I appreciate that.
Everything I've.
All right, so you can't have access to police cameras. I can talk all night louder than you. Trust me. Now, in closing, I want to, you know, I don't blame the governor. I know you're in a bad spot, but the conduct of the mayor and the business manager, it's impacting the police department and the borough. Everyone's losing in this situation, all right? The taxpayers, the police officers, everyone up here. Close the litigation to the taxpayers and instability in the police department is taking place. I think we all know that, all right? You're losing good police officers. I know. I hired them. I know, it's funny, but quite frankly, I'm gonna post more of them. You got some damn good cops in this police department. I'm going to hire more of them, telling my colleagues, I highly recommend these things. All right, you got good police officers, but this interference, and it's gone too far. Everyone needs to get in a room and resolve this. Everyone needs to put their egos in check, all right? But, yeah, I mean, this officer I hired, so why are you leaving? And I think I knew why. He says, my stomach hurts going to work every single day. I said, why? He said, we don't know what's coming from the top. And I said, the chief? He said, no, the politics. And he didn't want to get into it. I didn't want to press the kid. I do thank you for him. He's an amazing police officer. He's going up. I definitely believe he'll be sitting in my chair one day. So recruitment and retention in most agencies are a problem. If you keep this dysfunction, you're gonna have a problem operating the police department. You look at the city of East Orange, it's a little different environment, but there's some small departments chequered throughout the state. They're having a problem fielding shifts. And a lot of it has to do with dysfunction. Chief Corpusero has spent 30 years dedicated to unblemished service to the residents of Spotswood. Well-respected in the county, as you can see, all the chiefs here are well-respected in the state of New Jersey. I urge council to do this, let's get the ball rolling. Put a resolution on the agenda supporting the return of Chief Corpusero, Captain Mayo, throw Sasso in at full duty, along with the dismissal of these bogus charges. You have the authority to do so. The mayor and business administrator, they know that. This is why they're fighting so damn hard with taxpayer dollars to revenue from hiring an attorney for guidance. I also urge you to pass a resolution demanding that Mayor Palmer and the administrator accuse themselves of any policy or decisions involving the police department until this litigation is due. Basically, appoint the council president as the appropriate authority. So all these matters are resolved. There's no conflicts. Stop the bleeding of the taxpayers' dollars and the devastation of morale. Take action tonight. I do suggest you budget more funds. It'll look like a nice budget. I think it's going up next year. going on next year. You know, I'm not saying this in jest or being funny, everyone has their opinion with hiring these grant writers. In South Orange, we write our own grants. I got a brilliant idea. Instead of having a half a million dollar salary, sit home with pay, bring them in and write grants. They're not that hard. You write the grant and fill out the application. If you have a technical question, they usually have help. Not that hard. They're not that hard to find, it's the internet. So, that, I'm closing out. I want to thank you tonight for giving me the opportunity, and I urge you to take action, and please do so swiftly. Bring these police officers back to work, let them do their job, and let's come up with some kind of resolution, where everyone gets in the room, affects their egos, and put these matters to bed. Nobody's getting rich. Anyone I've ever talked to that's been involved with this litigation, even ones that got over a billion dollars, will tell you it's not worth it. It's not worth the toll it takes on you, your coworkers, and your family. Let's resolve this, and let's move on. Thank you.
Good evening. Charlie Ronco, Manalga Road. Several months ago, I had overrequested all of the tour planes that we currently have at that time. Never got a response to any shopping. So I overrequested statewide. I recently got a copy, I recently got a copy of one of the tour planes, and I'd like to read this to you. This goes directly impacts my life. "In September 2023, the unfair and protectional attacks against claimant," this is Corpusero's per claim, "continued. Unfortunately, the addition of BA Umba to the Palmer administration brought a whole new level of nefarious behavior. BA Umba used his influence as a then state assemblyman to seek protections at the expense of the department. Specifically, BA Umba claimed the borough resident had scared him at a borough council meeting when she said he was a predictable douchebag." That would be me. You are a predictable douchebag. BA Umba then contacted the Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office and reported that he was in fear for his safety as a state assemblyman, which in turn sparked a call to the New Jersey State Police, who then showed up at my house on October 13th. Because apparently, if you use the word predictable douchebag, that's some kind of threat to physical bodily harm. He then called the New Jersey State Police Executive Protection Unit for their investigation and enforcement action. However, BA Umba went on to state to the other law enforcement agencies that, quote, "he did not trust the public police department," end quote, "in order to gain their assistance." Such disloyal offenses and derogatory statements made by the borough-owned BA caused claimant great professional embarrassment and were widespread enough to be reported back to the claimant. BA Umba thus vilified and defamed claimant and the department to law enforcement agencies they deal with on a regular basis, including the Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office and the New Jersey State Police. A few days later, BA Umba then became the complaint on an IA matter against claimant and two other officers being targeted, likely with the advice and assistance of Mayor Palmer, as per their usual modus operandi of using the IA process as a shield and a sword. My husband got called into the Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office on an IA that was filed against Meil and Corpusero, because apparently, we are in cahoots, it's a conspiracy Umba complained that all the target officers were engaged in the dissemination of confidential information solely because he viewed CCTV footage and watched the borough resident, he fears, enter the department. Again, without any actual proof or reliable information, BA Umba immediately defamed claimant and basically imputed serious misconduct to him. BA Umba contacted the Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office with his devised and imaginary conspiracy theory, because he is aware that all such complaints need to be investigated per the IAPP. Clearly, BA Umba is now following in the Palmer administration playbook and continues to subject claimant and certain of his staff members, who are at the top-tier targets of Mayor Palmer, to retaliatory adverse action. You are a predictable douchebag. You are also a pompous ass. You should be ashamed of yourself. Your husband screwed up, and now you're trying to go after the police department for it. We all know it. Just resign, Jeffy, call it a day, and take your idiots with you, because we're all done, we're all fed up. This is costing us millions of dollars. Have you done your job yet, Brandon, and figured out the retirement crap? Oh, that's right, you've only been here a year, you haven't done that yet. Just as for record purposes here, his brother's also a state trooper. Make sure the state police come to my house again, when I see you in Alba Road.
I'll make a motion to close the public portion.
Seconded.
Call in favor.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Call in favor.
Aye.